All right, well, we're all here. It's time, let's call the meeting to order.
Okay, call the meeting to order.
Now it's you.
Now it's me, yeah. Install new board member, so welcome to our board, Mr. Olson. And the first thing on the agenda is to do the election of officers, and then I'll be quiet and the new president will take over. So I'll take any nomination for president.
Move to nominate John Shutt for board president.
I'm going to nominate Jody Huff.
Do you need seconds for those?
I'm here.
I don't remember.
No, not for nominations, you don't need seconds, yes. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, so we have two nominations, John Shuck, Jody Huff. So we need to have a vote. Now I can't remember. Do we just, like John was nominated first, so then do we do?
I think on those you have to do it written, I think. If I remember correctly.
So one for Jody. One for John. Another for John. One for Jody. And fifth is for Jody. Three to two for Jody Huff.
Do you accept?
I will, I will accept. And I will do my best. Appreciate your vote of confidence.
All right. Now I think we need a motion to place you as the president, right? No, that was it, okay.
Once you have a vote, it's it.
All right. That was you? Yep.
Okay. I will take nominations for vice president.
Let's get a nominee, John Shuck.
Any more nominations?
I make a motion, nomination cease and cast, you have a spell for John.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to cease nominations and cast you out and spell for John. Any discussion on that? Discussion? You're good with this?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. John is our vice president. Okay. Acknowledged outgoing board members. I would like to take a minute here to acknowledge Mr. Shannon Getz. You know, and thank him for his time and his service. I mean Shannon spent 12 years on this board, and I thought he did a fine job all 12 years. It's been a pleasure working with him, for sure. I think it's important that we acknowledge that and thank him for that. I don't know if from the school standpoint, anything has ever, ever done for outgoing board members.
I don't think it has, but I would like to make something that we do. I mean, have an annual thing where we do acknowledge the outgoing board members and welcome the incoming board members in a more, not necessarily formal setting, but in a different setting, I guess.
Are you thinking more public, what's your kind of thoughts?
Well, I was thinking, like, I know you used to have a meal, I think, at this meeting, at the July meeting. So I would, I guess what I would suggest, or what I was thinking is maybe have a meal and you know, the celebration after the canvassing of votes when we canvass. So that would be that special meeting in June, if you have to have it. And if we don't have to have that special meeting in June, I would say August. Try and stay away from July, because the agenda is so long. But then have a special celebration for the incoming and the outgoing at the August meeting before or after.
So maybe we talked a little bit about having an August, a meal for the August meeting.
Right.
You know, just to, which it's usually, it's fairly informal, you know, just show up an hour before the meeting, have a meal, but well, and I would, I would suggest we invite Mr. Getz to that as a thank you as well.
Absolutely.
And then welcome again to Mr. Olson. Thank you for wanting to do this. And welcome John again to back. Anything else on that topic? Thanks, thanks for that, Ross. Okay, approval agenda? Ah, I guess. The one thing I noticed is that just for this meeting, our consent agenda is just minutes? But then the other stuff comes later?
Yeah, that was just for the, that's how last year's July meeting was, so I followed that totally.
Okay. But that's not a permanent change, that's just, okay.
No, that's just for this meeting.
Okay. I'm good with that. Did entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I still move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, we get two sets of minutes, then. Regular meeting was June 12, special meeting was June 25. Maybe get a chance to open those, but is there any, does anybody have any corrections or additions to these two sets of minutes? Okay, there are no corrections. Intervene motion to approve those two sets of minutes.
I still move.
John? Second by Dave, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Appoint a business manager.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amber Bartsch as their business manager.
Okay, we got a motion. Second by Dwayne. Any discussion? Not needed. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? Congratulations, Amber.
I was gonna say, notice how they asked Jody if he accepted, but they're not really giving it an option. Sorry, Amber.
There's a short amount of discussion there, wow. Okay. Areas of responsibility, I guess, although he's known as committees. So. Oh, look what we have, we have what we had last year. Personnel and finance. Does that a lot of times end up being president, vice president, or are there any?
It had been in the past, but I think you were on the last year. I know the other years that I've been on, that was always president, vice president.
And I mean it.
I think that's really matter, I guess.
You just want to keep it that way, or?
I would question whether the two, I don't know what it takes to look at that, I don't know if that's part of the strategic plan or what, but whether the two should be together. Not too sure what the groupings of the committees, how that was determined, or if that needs review.
I think that was the only one that I've been president, vice president, then every other one was just, just, because I've been on all the other ones aside from the RACTC and RESP, I've been on all the other ones.
Sure. Open for discussion. Finance doesn't get real involved.
So do we even have a description of the committees and kind of what their expectations, roles, or?
Well, I can tell you the Raider Foundation, the activities, and the transportation did meet once last year.
Really? I don't believe the personnel even did. But I'm aware of.
But those, I mean, those other things are all, I don't even know what the Raider Foundation really.
That goes back to a a fund, a couple of funds set up, one's an endowment, and one is a regular donation. They're both donation funds. And why, we set those up about six years ago?
Probably.
Probably.
And.
When we built the school.
Yeah, so it kind of stemmed off of that as, as a place for, hey, if we want to do another project, a bigger project, you know, a place to have two, for people to donate funds for a specific project, or, or interest in general. They are small, they haven't really been, hasn't been utilized at all.
I don't know much of the current project.
No. Right, it hasn't been, it hasn't been pushed. The first year or two, we did kind of, you know, advertise it a little bit, had some pamphlets and pushed it. There's a little bit of money in there right now, and like I said, I want to say it's 10 to 20,000 dollar issue range, you know, so I don't know what's in there.
Seems to me like the appoint committees, a couple of these maybe aren't committees. You know, the RACTC, the RESP, seems like it's more just a representative from the board. Not sure if that is even fits in a committee role. So I'm not sure if that's what areas responsibilities, maybe we're saying committees. Transportation seems like it's truly a committee. So that, I'm not sure if, did curriculum and technology, did that meet last year?
Did you guys meet? It was, curriculum and technology was John and me.
Yeah, there wasn't anything that was.
Yeah, I, I'm really questioning what we got, you know, whether we should just even you know, I think we could appoint representatives to those pieces that actually are utilized in this, and then work with Dr. Ziegler and administration on whether we should be editing the other committees and leave them vacant at this point until we understand more what, what are our goals within that.
We've been building equipment, we've done throughout, ever since I've been on, we've always done something.
Yeah, right, yeah, we've always done this.
That one's one that, you know, obviously that personnel, transportation, activities committee, my first year I was on it, we met a couple times. But other than that, like I said, the other ones, I don't even think.
Personnel and finance is negotiations.
Right.
And that's going to come up this year.
Does that, but is that, I mean, we got a five-member board, right? I mean committees, a lot of times it's your seven, 12-member boards. Or 13, I guess. Does the personnel and finance actually just meet with a couple people on a committee, or do they do they tend to be full board anyway?
Personnel and finance will negotiate with the teachers this year.
Yeah, when you do teacher negotiations, you just have, you know, two board members.
Just a couple more members.
Two members from the
Teacher's rating unit.
And, and you meet that way. And it, that's kind of nice, because you, you don't have to be a public meeting and televise and all that, because you're negotiating.
Sure, sure.
That's important.
Yeah, that makes sense. I'd be fine doing that one, that's one I haven't done.
Okay. And I can sure, I can sure be on that too, I mean, we can, we can ask the president, vice president, and we can do it. Okay?
Have you, have you seen other committees on other schools, or anything different?
No, not really. These are, yeah, personnel, finance, building, maintenance, curriculum, technology, yeah, those are pretty much the same.
What's your thoughts, Mr. Ziegler, on, is it a situation where we should just stick with these then and assign people and actually push to have meetings with them, or would that add value, or?
I guess my feeling is if they're not going to be used, or not used, I should say, if there's no action to be taken by the committee, then there isn't any point to have people on the committee.
Sure.
Building and equipment, though, it's nice to have that committee, because then then the superintendent or building principals have two people to contact to talk about an issue that just came up, instead of trying to get hold of the whole board. So I mean, that's the main thing, is that it's, it's better to communicate. Because then if it's only two people, it's not a board meeting, we can have no.
You could react quicker.
Yeah, yeah. So I would definitely say building and equipment. Curriculum and technology, we are looking at some other curriculum I've heard, so that might be nice to have, to have that too. I can't guarantee how often you'll meet.
Sure. I mean, that was the thing where it seemed like it was just done at the board meeting. Like when we talked about it before, which is done here versus.
I think your board meetings would be a lot smoother and faster if the committee did it and then brought a recommendation to the board.
Yeah, typically it's a principal report, and then it was just a board vote to.
Right, yeah. And then one thing that I don't see on here that might be good, and I don't know how long it's been, but policy. It's, it's nice to have a policy committee too, to go over the policies and make sure that we're up to date, because they've been changing a lot these past few years with our, our legislature. New laws. But that could be incorporated into a, a different group, I mean personnel and finance and policy, you could say.
Is there a requirement of a quantity then that can be on a committee? Or is it just have to be less than the full board to be considered committee and not under the?
Well, if you had three, you'd have a quorum.
Yeah, you can't have a quorum.
Oh, it has to be two only, then for our, okay.
Yeah, well, for this one, for this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting.
Do you want to scratch Raider Foundation for now, or what do you think about Raider Foundation?
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, you can have it, just because if, and just not meet unless, you know, somebody donates or you need to use the funds for something. I don't think you need to necessarily get rid of it, but just know that you're not going to meet, I mean, it's really a.
Maybe somebody will pick it up and go with it once, I mean, the need would definitely be there.
Yeah.
You know. It, it will involve a lot of work, I think that's why. I guess I'd take RACTC again.
RACTC? That's a good one, then. Have a consistent person on.
Yeah, I could take RESP.
Once you kind of figure it out, you can actually accomplish something.
Something on their distribution list, even though that one tends to have very little information to bring to the board. That one can almost just be a, get on the notification letter for all the board members and pretty much know.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Do you want to add policy into somewhere? I mean, do you want a policy committee, or what do you guys think?
Well, how long, how long has it been since we took a deep dive into policy?
Well, we were doing policy, usually some policy every meeting. I mean, Mr. Ball has admitted, it seemed like you always had one on the agenda, one or two on the agenda every day, where you was always.
I think Mr. Zieg, Kelly did too.
Yeah, and that's fine too, if you want to keep doing it that, I don't have no problem with that.
So that you have to just kind of keep looking through it.
Yeah, and then you wouldn't need a committee, you know, just bring it to the board, so. Maybe we want a committee.
Let's back up to buildings and equipment.
Or we had a point with that, though, where. On the policy piece, though, or we had a point where we got enough policies that need updated that a committee in doing more than a cadence of one per, per board meeting would be of value, or?
All our policies come from School Boards Association. So when they make a change, then those would be the ones that we bring forward, then.
Talking about policies that aren't directly to the board, not necessarily like the school policies in terms of behavior, or those types of.
Administrative regulations, yeah, yeah.
Thanks for that clarification. Buildings and equipment, Dave Volanteer? Do you want to be on that one yet, or?
It doesn't matter. You're definitely good at it when we're talking about the AC stuff, you were very knowledgeable on. A lot of that stuff, way more than me. I'm absolutely fine doing it, but he definitely knows what he's doing when he's on it, that's for sure.
I'll, I'll do it again. Yeah, I'll do it.
Good job, John.
So anyway, that Raider Foundation one's looking pretty good.
Everybody's jumping into transportation.
Yeah, transportation, yeah. Curriculum and technology, so last year it was, it was John and me.
Can I all stay on it? We see that it's of value to meet.
Are you too on there? You really, I'd go on there too.
Dave and Tyler, okay. Transportation. This one usually does meet.
Yeah. I can do transportation.
Bus rocks. Dwayne and John. Activities. John, you were on that one last year.
I think I've been on that one every time I've been on, every year. I, me and Bill, and like I said, I, we've met one time in the three years I was on.
Does that one get more involved when you're hiring coaches, or more coaches, or that kind of stuff, or it seems like? Because that's what, you've been involved in hiring coaches.
No, because the, the last one, we just appointed Logan. Like, it wasn't even on.
Yeah, didn't you, didn't have to interview him.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know what that committee would really, really do.
I actually really don't think we need it.
Yeah.
It's like.
Because all the, all the finance, I mean, is going to be, take place in personal finance.
Right.
As part of that, too.
So area is done by the administration.
Right. So. I mean, I, I would see that more if we were part of a co-op, well, I guess we are with Debrin.
But you would.
Yeah.
I think it's one we could.
Should we scratch it?
I think we could.
If something comes up and we need to form a committee, we can.
We can always do.
Yeah.
All right, cool, I like it. Raider Foundation.
I mean, I'll be on it if we just.
Dwayne, you want to be on that one?
Sure. I think it'd be nice to take off if I'd ever have time to do it. It would take a lot of time.
Is it both?
Dwayne and John.
And John, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Are we good? Anybody want to change, switch?
Good.
We'll use that, we'll use that for a starting point, so things, things can switch around and change too, so. We should go after. Okay, moving on. Does need authorized representatives, so superintendent for hot lunch program, title one, two, three, four.
I still move to put the superintendent.
I'll second.
Move and second for their superintendent. For the hot lunch program, and titles, any discussion? You're good? There, that's, okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Homeless liaison and foster liaison has been Ms. Sarah Conlon, in the past.
I'll move to have Sarah Conlon in that position again.
Okay. Motion, second. Move and second by Dave, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of Ms. Sarah Conlon for homeless liaison, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, title. I mean, these one by one?
You can do them all together, but we have to have four, at least four individuals. One separate individual for each of those. So you, one coordinator, investigators, informer, they can't be the same person, in other words, is what I'm trying to say.
Different, okay, so. And if you guys want to elaborate on these as to what, what they do, by all means, just do you have a coordinator, a title coordinator?
Yeah, title nine is the they would handle all the sexual harassment, bullying, those type of cases. So then the coordinator pretty much is the individual that would talk to the individuals first. They would be the one collecting the paperwork of, of the complaint or whatever it may be, and then hand it over to the investigator. I suggested Dr. Vogel and Mrs. Collexon as investigators, one at each school, so they can do the investigation. And then it would go to the Informer Resolution Facilitator, which is usually the superintendent with an opinion. And then if the people don't agree with that opinion, then it goes to the, usually the board president.
Okay.
And you did a separate motion for each one?
No, you put them all together, yeah.
I'll make a motion to go with the title, I propose.
Okay, motion?
I'll second.
Second by John. Any more discussion or questions on, on those roles responsibilities?
I just have one statement, agendas are printed in May and June, so it's going to be listed wrong in the handbook for the high school and the fifth and sixth grade agendas.
This is a brand new requirement by IOCR that we have separate individuals.
What's printed in the?
Like currently, we have Misty, for example, the coordinator and the investigator.
And Levon, Bob was the decision maker.
Right.
But, I mean, just because agendas are already printed, that's something that I'll just have to put out with the new law and the vote, that it's not going to match the agenda.
Kind of dead, whatever, too.
Yes.
Is the new law also require us to review the policy then, to align it?
There's training that I'll send you information on. You're welcome.
Okay.
Great, been going on it first.
It's coming up in August, so it'll go over all the new regulations and what, what we all need to have, and.
So that's training for each of these individuals, then?
Yeah.
Is what that is to me.
Well, only one, it's online, only one person has to register, but all four or all five of these people will have to watch it.
So what created the change then from what was before? How was that determined to? Before we had the decision maker as Mrs. Bob and the.
Previously, you could combine roles, so I was the coordinator and investigator, and then the other principal was the coordinator and investigator. And the new law says to have them separate, so you have more people involved, which makes sense.
So does the law prescribe the board president as the decision maker?
No, no, you can have, yeah, it doesn't have to be the board president, most of the time it is. Because kind of like the, if somebody even has a complaint about anything, it's going to go to the principals. Then if they don't agree, it'll go to the superintendent. If they still don't agree, it's going to come to the board.
So it comes to the board or to the board president?
Board president will make the the ultimate decision.
Could it ever? Could it ever come to the full board? Or would that?
I thought that the policy right now states that the decision maker was the final decision.
Yeah.
That's how it was previously stated, if the new law is different, I don't know.
Oh, great.
Right. Yeah, I think that, yeah, the decision maker is when it gets there, done.
Is this something we need determined in this meeting?
Well, we need it to make sure we get the right people to the training.
Okay.
Which was in August?
In August.
I guess in the past, last year, I had some stakeholder questions and complaints about, not necessarily related to bullying, not necessarily the bullying itself, but how the process and the, whether or not we did follow the process, the policies and the law ultimately, right? So, um, yeah, this one.
And that's why the training is so important.
Talking tonight with the, yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, feel free to put somebody else in there.
Well, you know, I just question whether the decision maker is a board president, what, how does that, how does that fit on some of these?
The only problem with that is how. I'm not someone who's involved in day-to-day operations of the school and.
That's what they want.
Maybe that's bad.
Yeah, that's what they want.
So can you have it be the board rather than just him?
Then we all have to attend the training, correct?
Yeah, so go with training and.
I'm not sure.
I mean, I. It's a lot for one person to say, yeah, this is it, you know, I mean, not that.
Yeah.
Well, just so you know, John, though, it goes through the school lawyers, and they go through every step, so you would have discussions with them.
Sure.
How many cases last year got to that point, to the decision maker point?
At our school for.
Well, so it does happen. Or it does get that, it does get that far.
It went past the informal resolution?
No, it was all, it was all done at superintendent. But that doesn't mean they couldn't go to the board.
Well, so it did. Oh, but there were four cases.
Yes.
Okay.
Would it maybe be, cause I see it says decision maker, makers, would it be a idea to have?
Oh, the two people then.
A couple of people on there?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't see why you couldn't.
I just wonder, you know, I.
Yeah.
I know as one person, it might be tough to just say, hey, this is, if it gets to you, that's a big deal.
That's a big. Right. Right.
So I wonder if it wouldn't be a good idea to have a couple on there, so at least you can talk it through and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, so we had it here once a few years back, and it was the whole board. Was that different than this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and the principals are just investigators, we just solve the policy and.
This is title, this is title nine, that was not, yeah, correct, this is a whole, but yeah.
Right. Yeah, and this, I shouldn't, it kinda goes to bullying, but if it's bullying across gender lines, cause title nine is all to discrimination.
Discrimination.
Oh, okay, so, okay. I close for the question.
Certain, certain, okay.
Are you seeing other schools adopt the board president or board?
Wait, the board president.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
And is it normally just one person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, I mean, well.
That's why I say board president, vice president, I'm totally good with that.
Even as, when I was principal and as superintendent, I've never had it gone to the to the decision maker. It's always been settled before that point. But you never know. What do you guys say?
Do we have anybody in the school that already has training or that this fits in their role better, you know? Even the investigator role, I mean, I feel like, yeah, we're defaulting to, but we've also heard overworked, struggling with duties, do we have somebody already that fits in these roles any better?
I would say probably not, just because of the new changes, so even if you had been trained in the past, it's it's different now.
Okay.
Sometimes, the only thing that I've heard is sometimes they say the investigator should maybe be an outside person.
Oh.
And so some schools have done that, where they'll make a an agreement with another school, where their investigator will come and do the investigation. So it's a fresh person, it's not somebody.
Our school's not using the school resource officer, or is that?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
They're not allowed to unless it crosses law enforcement.
Right.
Oh, fair enough, yeah.
Yeah.
And sometimes it does.
Yeah.
But then we have to have separate investigations.
Oh, sure.
Guys wanna make any changes there or?
I don't think I know enough to know if I wanna make changes, so.
I'm ready to move.
I think we put president and vice president on there, put a decision maker, two people.
I'm good with that. He's been training.
My grand idea, dude.
Dave, you wanna roll that into a motion too?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that. President, vice president as the decision makers.
Second.
And all the others as listed?
Yep, all the others as listed.
Okay, motion, second, discussion. Okay, saying none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. Uh, five oh four authorized rep. Building principals. Again, it reminds me of five oh four.
Five oh four is the, uh, the Office of Civil Rights again, is to make sure that we're we're not discriminating because of disabilities. So that that person, uh, the authorized rep is really the one that's gonna sign the paperwork. The individual doing a five oh four on a student does not have to be the authorized rep. A lot of times, it might be the counselor, for example, that would, you know, help write the five oh four. So five oh four is just, it's kinda like in IEP, uh, it has, it's still, you have to follow it, it's a law. Uh, whatever's put in there, but, uh, it's a little different than a five oh four or an IEP, just, uh, it's more health-related a lot of times, rather than, uh, like those disabilities, somebody, let's say somebody breaks their leg and they're gonna be in a cast for six months.
Right.
Then five oh four would be written, and how can we still educate that individual?
And so our counselors are writing the five oh fours?
Some, I mean, it, sometimes, it, yeah, it it doesn't, it might, it might be Mrs. Messer over here helping with the five oh four process.
She's gonna shake her head no.
Usually, to not specialize, doesn't.
Right.
Yeah.
Try to keep those separate, because sometimes five oh four does evolve to become an IEP process, so they try to keep them separate.
Right.
Right, separate. I'm just of the opinion that we should keep an authorized rep as close to the person that's actually doing the source, if possible.
Well, it's a team.
Okay.
So your five oh four, the authorized rep would still be at the meeting.
Okay.
They're just not the one doing the the paperwork side.
Okay, ready for a motion on that?
A motion for principals to be the five oh four reps.
Okay, we got a motion, maybe a second?
I'll second.
Second by John, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries, alright. Designated depositories, put a community bank and trust, that is our one and only right now, correct?
Yes.
That's all.
I'll make a motion to do the same.
John made a motion, second, second by Dave, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries, put a community. Uh, pledge of assets, there is a document in here from the core community. And I think we just gave a motion to accept.
Hi, it's more for your information, this is just.
Oh, we don't need a motion.
No, you don't get to approve it, this is just, this is the bank stating that you're over what FDIC covers, but there, they'll still cover it by this pledge.
Yep, they've got enough internal assets to cover up that. FDIC needs to, uh, up the end.
You think?
Yeah.
Okay, so no action needed?
Nope.
Uh, designate an official newspaper, we have a suggestion for the Richthood Merchant.
Okay. Questions on this?
Motion on that.
In order for us to comply with, uh, several of the century codes around notifications, even like special board meeting. You know, the century code says that we were to, if we do a special board meeting, that we are to announce that in our record or or a paper of record, now, that's somewhat antiquated, right? Most of the time, it probably anymore is a is a website or something like that, and I posted on the door like we saw it tonight. Um, some of those things, it would be good, I think, for informing the public, for us to try to at least comply as close as possible to challenge with the Richthood Merchant, and I'm not at all advocating that we don't consider the Richthood Merchant, where we still put in our minutes, put the the classic, the traditional, if you will. Nobody likes change, and certainly we want to have those communications through the Richthood Merchant, but what do we have to do so that we can have notifications going public uh, more timely and and correct and kinda comply with, uh, some of those century code rules?
Not use a newspaper. I mean, if you wanna communicate quickly, right?
Well, some of the laws around the fact that you can't communicate too quickly, but certainly some of it, if you wanna have a meeting within a seven-day timeframe, sometimes the merchant is not an option for that, so.
And if I remember correctly, we talked about this with, was it Alexis or somebody? And it was said that even just putting it on our website fulfills the obligation.
Sure.
And I I think newspaper in general is outdated.
Yeah, it's definitely.
We haven't paid a newspaper anywhere.
Right.
They suppress unless you go online.
Right, and and so then do you call it the Dickens Press, do you call it the Bismarck Tribune, you call, you know, where do you?
Yeah, what we've been told is, uh, well, this is a little different than just advertising meetings, but advertising meetings is what you've done most of the time, that's what you have to do, so if it's hanging out on the door, putting it on your website, then that's what you keep doing. Uh, so, but I think this is more for, like you said, where are you gonna post your minutes, what are you gonna, yeah, do your advertisements for positions? Part of it is in your regular meetings too, but yeah, it's hard to get a special meeting posted in the paper, unless you know way ahead of time.
So what are we doing for those special meetings that right now?
Goes on our website.
Post on website, post on building.
Okay, so like, the agenda we got last Wednesday or Tuesday as a board, that's supposed to be posted public at the same timeframe, how do we accomplish that?
Uh, Bonnie posted on the website, I think.
Yeah, Bonnie does it on the website.
What's that now?
Yeah, for this one, I I thought I sent it, but I didn't send it, it's in my up going.
Oh, okay.
In my trap, sorry. So, but yeah, for special meetings, it should be the same, you you have to post a special meeting the same way you would post a regular meeting.
Right, okay, so, I mean, the century code specifically says, presidents of each school board shall ensure that notice of each multi-board meeting in which the school board will participate is published in the local newspapers of general circulation at least one week before the meeting date. Um, and like I said, antiquated, but it's still there, so.
We currently have a motion on the, a motion for the Richthood Merchant, but I didn't hear a second.
I'll second.
The motion is second for Richthood Merchant as our official newspaper, now, any more discussion? I mean, I know what our options are, you have to press. Other options would probably charge us to post minutes, does the merchant charges? We have a contract with the merchant. And the merchant delivers free to everybody in the area, that's that's one good thing. Uh, any other discussion?
What Dickens Press, I mean, how many people actually get the Dickens Press out there, are you really gaining anything?
Right.
And I guess I'm not advocating for a change in press or anything, but I guess, and this might be a separate topic. Um, it is required that we designate a official newspaper as well, which is interesting, but I guess maybe it's for another meeting, but a discussion around what we should be doing for, uh, you know, public announcements and the timing on that, just to stay transparent, so.
Does it go on the all calls, is it a text message chain, when we have a special meeting to go on?
Yeah, the the about discussion is that perhaps that's the platform we utilize.
Yeah, we would save that discussion for another meeting, but yeah, we could, we wanna do more to to announce meetings and special meetings, which is good.
Absolutely, yeah. Just typically, all that goes in the merchant is the minutes, am I correct, is there anything?
Minutes, yeah, yeah, and, well, I I will say the merchant has been very kind to the school, I mean, they take any, all our school activities, I mean, she's happy to print all that, so.
Sure. Do you have announcements going to?
Yeah. So, okay, any more dis, any discussion on the newspaper? Okay, saying none, all in favor of using Richthood Merchant as our official newspaper, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. Uh, meeting dates and times for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school term, so typically, second Wednesday, six o'clock during标准time and seven o'clock during daylight savings time, is that what we wanna stick with? Seems to work well.
Supposed, mostly the nature change for new members.
That is when I do coaching for archery and trappists on the nights, but we can figure that out, I guess.
On Wednesdays?
It's Wednesdays.
Open to a mood. I will say, oh, that mean, pretty much every other activity, it happens on everything but Wednesday, so.
Yeah, yeah, I've got some help with coaches, so I can, I can make it work. Yeah, that works better, correct, and do Wednesdays, like, Wednesday work.
Yeah, that's why we default to any Wednesday night.
The only other thing that would possibly work would be Sunday nights, but that's, yeah.
Well, thanks.
That's a tough one too, that won't be here, yeah.
Do it on a Sunday, I won't be here.
Yeah.
Okay, you guys wanna stick with that or can we make a motion?
I'll go with that, I'll go with that.
I'll second.
Dwayne, second by John, more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side? Okay, motion carries. District fees, there is a document, uh, here for that. Some of these haven't been raised in, I mean, in a couple of years, and I'm not suggesting we do by any means, but. So we got it. Hot lunch looks like it's remained pretty constant for quite a few years, and I don't know. If, uh, that's good, I mean, I know our hot lunch just simply loses money, and that's.
Yeah, every school it does.
Yeah, I mean, so. Uh, gate fees for for events are sort of standard across the schools right now, I think. That's seven dollar for adults. All students are five. I think that's, I think that's pretty normal, we gotta say anything different. Adult season passes were raised three years ago. I don't know, you guys have any, any, or have any suggestions or? Anything that we need to make a change on?
I'm not fitting within the fees, but really, last year, didn't we have a point where we had computers? Where either it was either a discussion or, uh, Adam asked for something along the lines of computers, but I know that in some schools, they, it's not a fee, it's an optional, but they offer an insurance program for the computers. I believe if I remember right, there was something like eight thousand dollars in damaged computers, they asked for, take three hundred twenty-five, do twenty dollars, and set up an insurance program where if you buy the insurance, you, something happens to the computer, you're covered, if you don't, it's. something happens to the computer, you're covered. If you don't, it's a liability. I'm not sure if we have a problem with that, but I know what came up last year of damage to computers, or if we have an external insurance program that we do charge a fee and buy into. I don't know, it's not on here, so maybe I'm bringing up something that's a non-issue, but.
Yeah, we don't charge a fee for, I mean, in here, a fee for computers, but yet we require the students to have them, so I don't know that you can. Right, I mean, it's, we're one to one, so.
Um, there has been some that have been charged to repay or to repair.
To repair, so we have that. Do they get paid usually, or is it a problem, or?
Um, I'd have to check with Adam and Sarah. Usually it's paid.
Okay.
It, it would fit in, a line item would fit in here if you wanted to say.
Offered insurance.
Yeah, computer insurance offered and, you know, whatever that might be with ten dollars or fifteen dollars or whatever. But that would have to be researched and figured out already.
And it's a hard process. Yes.
I would agree, yeah.
Yes.
To, to, oh, to actually get insurance.
With the verbiage and, oh no, the insurance would be easy to do. I mean, it's, you could, the school could self-insure itself. But the process of getting it approved, because it's got to go through the state and everything else, and it's, it's an absolute nightmare.
You mean on a, on an additional fee or on a optional?
For insurance. If you're going to sell it as insurance, it has to be approved.
Right.
Okay.
And I, I, I guess I treat them as textbooks like you used to. If you damage your textbook, you're responsible to pay for it. Same with the computers.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's, let's just answer this for now, man. Like I said, plus I've been looking at changes on, on the models, on, on anything here. All right, does the administration have any suggestions on any fee changes?
I would suggest that we try to stay where we're at with our lunches for the fact that we're still one of the highest in the state. I know we lose money, but we still want to make sure we're trying to provide for our families. The only other suggestion is there has been a complaint and we'd have to check with, um, kitchen law. Um, that at certain times you can only serve certain servings. And I feel if adult is paying for an adult lunch, they should have an adult serving. And right now, some of them aren't. They're getting like, if they go through with the younger, because there's different, there's three sections of servings. And so if an adult is paying that amount, then I feel like they should have the adult serving. But there was some kitchen rules at one time, something that we would have to look in.
Okay.
Too, but.
Fees we can leave.
I mean, it's hard for an adult to pay that amount and then get those amount of food.
Truly, it's the same for seven through twelve, because we're charging extra for those older kids are going to eat more than the kindergartners and second graders.
Right, and they do.
You know, so the fees are different, so.
Yeah, they do get a bigger amount. There's three sections of amounts.
Sure.
Um, but the thing is, is when the staff goes through during that time, there was a kitchen law with the state that they could only have that serving. So if that, if we could see if we could not, I mean, see if we still have to follow it, because if not, then we may need to look at something else.
I would just think that would be compared with reimbursements. I don't think it would be of the amount of food you get. You're only going to get reimbursed so much during those times.
We were, it was, three years ago, we were told it had to be, if you're going through with fifth grade, you get a fifth grade serving. So, thank you, because I feel like that would be fair amongst all staff.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to leave the fees the same.
Okay, sounds good.
Second.
Motion second by Dwayne. Any more discussion? Okay, y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. District fees are approved. Hot lunch, oh. College program, uh, determining official, that is for free and reduced.
Free and reduced lunch.
Yep. So, we're suggesting for Sarah Conlon. And it's Bonnie, two months, two months. So we have two, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? Getting hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, that motion carries. And then hearing official, again, free and reduced, is that?
Yes.
Has that always been, or here?
Yeah.
All right, you have a motion on that?
I still move.
Second. Move by John, second by Dwayne. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving hearing official, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carries. Uh, travel reimbursement, twenty-four, twenty-five. Talking mileage, state rate or?
Yeah. I believe, right, yeah, yeah. And then would that be state rate for motels too? Yeah.
Okay, so basically using state rate for travel reimbursement. Makes sense? Or make a motion?
I still move.
Okay, move by John.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion on travel reimbursement using state rates? Now, in all favor, say aye. Oppose, same side. Motion carries. All right, that's, that's all there. Okay, in old business. Reports, so we got a few reports. District people report. And these are just reports submitted to the state, right?
Correct.
I understand.
The district people membership report, we need a motion on that because the president will sign that stating how many pupils we had last year.
Okay. You guys need to review it, or you guys ready to make a motion?
Are we going to approve all of them together?
Some of them you don't need. Hot lunch report, you don't need a motion on.
Here's a question on the transportation report. Last year, we ran into an issue, I believe, on it getting doubled. And then we had to pay back, maybe it was the prior year. Was that, looks like it's cleaned up this year.
Yeah, it wasn't last year, it was the year.
Year before.
And then we got it last year.
Right. So you got cleaned up, so. Because of per ride means, or per run means a?
Well, let's go back to the, uh, district people report.
Okay, so we're not doing a motion.
Let's do them individually here.
I'll make a motion to approve the district people membership report.
Okay, move by John. Got a second? Anyone want to second that motion? Second by Damian. Any, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Okay, people membership report approved. Okay, transportation, okay. More questions on that?
Yeah, I was just making sure that our report is getting submitted right here. Because the per run is a round trip miles? Or is that a one, one direction?
I think it's one way.
It's one way.
Per run is one way.
So if I remember right, I don't know, you remember, did we have to pay back a portion of that, or how did that go?
I think we just didn't receive, is it received then because?
Okay, right.
Of the correctional.
Yeah.
Was this one filled out for you or did you have to?
This was filled out.
Filled out?
Yeah. Mr. House did this one.
Yeah, it all filled out, okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion on approving the transportation report.
To accept the transportation report?
Okay, we got a motion, Damian?
I'll second.
Second by Dave?
John.
Your job, sorry. Any more discussion? Saying now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Transportation report approved, and then hot lunch report for our information. And this is where we see the, uh, the lack of revenue center. Right. Lose sixty thousand dollars last year, but for the kids. You don't get a lot of reimbursement or aid. Like here during COVID, when they, when they fully reimbursed, that was pretty nice. And I know I was actually lobbying for it, and didn't make it. Any question on that, guys?
That was lobbied at the state level?
Federal.
Yeah, okay.
Federal. State level would, could be done too, absolutely. Push on our representatives for that. Okay, uh, okay, year end financial reports, so.
Those are usually on the consent agenda, so if you wanted to look at them all first and then make one motion to, to do them all.
I do want to do that. Activity. I notice this one actually gets to be a pretty good chunk of our.
Our revenue budget, actually.
Any questions, comments, concerns on the activity report? It's a lot to keep track of. It grows every year. Okay. Uh, balance sheet. Those are the more important ones here. Amber, is there anything you want to highlight on this or inform us on this? I mean, this is, this is our year end, right?
Balance sheet.
Our general fund number, does that, does that, does that come up? Uh, that's hard to say because you, you transfer money to savings. Are our current assets higher this year than they were last year? That's better way to ask it. And the last couple of years are thrown off a little bit on, on what you end with because of the S R money.
Once, I guess we're gonna, the question is, how is the S R fund? So we, we put in, we haven't received that S R three, we put in for.
We received all, what, about forty thousand dollars?
Oh, okay. So that is in this balance sheet at this point, okay. Was, was the S R received this year then put into the twenty-three, four as far as revenue received?
Yep, it's on the revenue report too. Yeah, and when you look at revenue, you'll see quite a surplus.
Yeah, there's almost a million more received than estimated, or am I not reading that right?
And that's, I think that's S R.
That's the S R.
Well, it's S R and on the revenue report, if you look at, um, student activity, right? Activity fund, there was some, some growth there on the, on the revenue.
Yeah, there was. Revenue was higher than expenses on the activity fund, yeah, so.
So we effectively banked that, that S R fund then.
Yeah.
And I guess by.
Uh, well, no, we, we, we spent a fair amount too, though. We, we bought, because we bought these new curriculums. We bought.
Those boards for the classrooms.
Media boards. I think the computers might have went into that too. There was some band equipment, some chairs, some furnishings.
Yeah.
And stuff that we didn't do it too, so there was.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I'll get, certainly, shouldn't get made. Because expenses, it, when you look at expenditure report, it's, it's higher than, than budgeted.
Sure.
Yeah, six point three versus six point eight, spend versus six point three budgeted, right?
Okay. Any other questions on balance sheet? Okay, uh. End of your June board bills.
The only question I have on the board bill is on both of them. The J P Morgan isn't filled out.
It's, it's filled out on one, but it would be filled out on the July one, I'm pretty sure, but not the June one.
No, I don't have that.
I don't think it's on the July one either. I was scrolling every direction, I didn't know where.
Oh, geez, yeah, it is.
Why does it do that?
No, it's a, I, I looked earlier.
You gotta scroll left.
Oh, yeah, this is way on column J.
Oh, there it is.
I swore I did that earlier today when I was looking at it. Apparently I didn't.
I think I just went up the down. Okay. Uh, let's see, so, end of year June, is there anything? I don't know, any questions on that? Okay, well, then, then we have expenditure. And I think we already mentioned bottom line on there is expenditures are above budget. But again, it's due to S R spending. I don't know, is there, is there anything else that, that would have put us, put us above? Beyond what we've kind of noticed over the year, and were subs and different things, but. Six hundred and sixty-three thousand over on expenditure. A lot of S R spending.
Because that included the gym floor, included the, a tailor that included, because didn't we do that last year?
That would have been.
Yeah, we voted on, or no, that would have been.
It was just done last summer, right?
Sort of in the year before. That one would have been in there. Right? Or would we have paid for it this year?
Probably would have paid for it this year. What we did?
Yeah.
Because if it was done last summer, that would be in this.
Yeah, if it's slated after June thirtieth, you would have paid for it last year.
That's all.
Yeah.
Cleachers.
Yeah, all those previous lighting, everything in that, that Taylor Gym got.
Sound, sound system.
Yeah. Amber, would the Taylor Gym floor would be in this expenditure, right?
Hmm.
No, wasn't that last year?
It was done in the summer, though, so we would have paid for it on this. I think we approved it, but we would have paid for it on, I assume.
Well, that would be under an O three account, because that would, it would have been out of the building.
Out of the building. Is it zero three?
So it probably is a hundred and twenty-one thousand. That's under O three?
You find that so fast. Okay. Well, it's about the amount.
Regarding revenue summary, um, title one is reported as coming in two hundred and twenty-four percent of budget. At two hundred and seventy-three thousand versus, um, budget of one twenty-one, is that? We book another payment that came in this year, or we just miss on the budget on that, or? payment that came in this year or we just miss on the budget on that or?
No, it's because the payment from last year only came in
Oh.
This school year, so it's almost like showing two years worth of revenue.
Two years worth of revenue, okay, that seems almost double.
Anything else on expenditures before we move on? July board bills is the next one. I'll inform J P Morgan of the July bills. Do you have any questions or anything that needs to be pointed out with this? Okay, if not, let's move on to our last one, the revenue. So yeah, revenue came up quite high. Any other highlights on that, Amber? With that, the double up on title. Uh, S R money is a big one. Add district tuition, that's.
Yeah, that was a lot higher missing.
Yeah. I imagine we paid some other districts as well to.
Yeah.
So the activity, the student activity, or is that page five? I, I, I don't know if I'm reading this wrong, but it shows up as a positive, well, two hundred and eighteen thousand.
The budget of zero.
Above budget, but you have a budget of zero, is that misleading or is that? Because we didn't gain it that much in student revenue in this accountability. With student activity. That's just kind of the balance of them, right?
Right, that's, yeah, that's just. Revenue received though, you don't have any expenses out of that, so. But you had a budget of zero, so.
That's what the kids raised for their, right, yeah, activities fund is in there.
Oh, so that is new money.
Plus the money you brought in without expenditure.
You're right, you're right, 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 of course.
Pause it there.
Yep. Yep, sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yep. Any questions? Questions? Okay. We'll entertain a motion on it all.
I'll make a motion to approve the year end annual financial reports.
Okay. Move by John, second by Dwayne, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Uh, I think this is a, it's an FYI, H V A C electrical quote. I think that just, that just came in this last week. As basically the hookup for H A Thompson's son. And they have a twenty-five weekly time. On a, on an eight hundred amp paddle.
Twenty-five weeks, very technical, going electrical.
Electricians. FYI, yep. But I, I don't, I think this is all, pretty much all been approved, so if there's any action needed, but FYI. Okay, new business. All right, we got a new para.
We hired a new para at Taylor, Brett Bradstreet. So FYI there. She's coming in at the, the, what do you call, minimum rate. Yeah, I think she'll do a great job. Anything else want to do for that one?
Do we need to approve these one at a time? We typically approve our hires?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the new hire.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion or input? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries.
New third grade teacher, we offered it to Tricia Marsh?
Max.
Tricia Max. Uh, she is not complete with her schooling yet, so she's gonna be student teaching while she is teaching. Uh, because of that, we have to watch on how we pay her. Uh, she's not eligible for T F R, there's other things that she's not eligible for. So she'll start at the sub-rate and then work her way up from there, once she's fully licensed, then we can switch her over to a contract.
Hold on, big time take.
Hopefully after the first semester.
Yeah, she's twelve weeks, she's got twelve weeks of student teaching to do.
Yeah.
Oh, where's she going to school?
Um, Western Governors University, it's an out of state college online, so.
Okay.
Is that sub-rate pay, state required, is that just what we do or?
That's what was uh, kinda negotiated with her.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What is that?
Dollar.
Hundred and fifty dollars a day.
One fifty a day.
And does that still go up, Amber, like long term? Cause Angel eventually obviously hit her long term sub.
So that was taken out of the negotiated agreement.
Okay.
Okay, any questions, if not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to hire, approve the hire of Tricia Max.
Okay, we got a motion, by John?
Second.
Second by Dave, any more discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, that one is scratched. Open enrollment.
Uh, open enrollment, we had, uh, Peterson family has already a student in school. She has kindergarten coming up, she missed the open enrollment deadline, so it's gonna be a tuition agreement. And I had to call her today and ask her to come in and fill that out, so that'll be coming hopefully in August. So we'll get that. Schwartz, grade.
So we have to approve to Peterson now or do we wait?
We wait for, yep, wait for August, yep. And then Schwartz is, uh, she has three, where they have three students, second grade, third grade and fifth grade. And they are moving, or they did move from Headinger up to Gladstone. So since it's a move, our open enrollment application is okay, we don't have to watch the deadlines. So we have those three for her second, third and fifth graders.
What are the numbers for students in those classes already?
Second grade is split already, a teacher there, so I have a seventeen and seventeen even split. On year they counted on this report, we did look at earlier, so they're already, the Schwartz's are already in there. And then third grade now with Mrs. Max being approved, they'll, they will be split also.
Okay.
So we should be okay.
And how about fifth grade?
Well, I guess I could speak to fifth, I had him last year.
Go ahead. I have to look it up. I just know we have one class.
I ended the year with twenty-three kids, so that would put them at
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four if everybody comes back from who I had, yep.
So we're good there?
Good.
Okay.
I'll pick to accept which ones we have.
Okay, we're going to accept, second, second by John, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Pledge of allegiance.
The last biennium, the legislator passed a new law saying that at all public meetings, uh, we have to give time for the pledge of allegiance. So I have to begin in the meeting for anybody who wants to say it, so we'll have to get a flag in here and then on August agenda, we'll have a line item for pledge for anybody who would like to say the pledge.
I like it. I don't think I've stood and done that since.
Should we have it written down for everyone?
It's like riding a bike.
I always wanna say. I don't know why.
As long as everyone around me is on the same.
It's that word indivisible that gets difficult.
Indivisible, what?
Indivisible, individual, indi.
Okay.
Uh, R A C T C.
Did not meet.
Did not meet.
And R E S B, you don't.
Not from the newsletter.
Okay, if you, and if you wanna forward those too.
Yeah, that's a.
Or you're just doing that, that would work too. That's good. So. Uh, next meeting, uh, Wednesday, August fourteenth, seven P M, so should we meet meal at six or? Do they wanna?
Yep.
I'm not sure if I'll be here.
We're talking about going to see my parents in Montana, I think a week.
We were talking steak and lobster, I think.
I eat it often anyway, so.
How about elk?
Yeah.
I mean, I got some, I've got some.
Yeah.
Got a freezer full, I'll give you some.
Yeah, we gotta actually plan that meal better, cause with enough notice, uh, John's a pretty good barbecue.
Remind me again, did we intend to meet on a special meeting regarding the new position then or?
I, well, we, we had a special meeting regarding it.
Right.
Two weeks ago, but I don't know.
We're waiting the three weeks for the applications, see what we get.
Okay.
Have we had any applications?
Yes.
Okay. It's complicated. Yeah, I just was curious if we have, have had, yeah. We've had five, two of them, uh, aren't qualified.
Okay, so, three, we're looking at.
Okay. So there's a chance that you may want approval on that prior to the next meeting or? I guess wait and see.
Yeah, I.
Okay.
Two, so it would be on the August meeting?
Right.
Fair enough.
So. So six o'clock, we'll come up and.
Can we uh, zoom in on that one, cause I'm gonna be out of town on the fourteenth too.
Um, we can, we have the technology.
We're gonna bump it up a week if you're gonna be gone, I'm gonna be gone, can we do that?
I just, well, I gotta
I would use something, August seventh, like.
Can't do it on the seventh.
We would, it would be better if we bumped it back a week.
Can't do it on that night either, you have lines meeting.
Oh.
Wednesdays are meeting that's all true.
I like, you could pick a different night than Wednesdays during August.
Yeah.
Very easily.
Besides Wednesday. Yeah, I guess, yeah, now's the time to, to, to figure this out, I mean.
Right, let's don't do it on a Wednesday.
But maybe we play out, we play out Tuesday.
Do it on Monday, I mean.
Do it on Monday.
Could do it on Monday.
It's summer, Monday could, certainly work.
Stuff time. It's August twelfth.
You guys wanna do that?
That's fine. I'm not sure I'll be, I, I'm not sure I'll be back, I'll have to, look, I don't remember if we're going the week of the fifth or the week of the twelfth. Because I'm real good at remembering those things, so.
Uh, it's up to you, I mean, if we wanted.
You know, bump it to Monday to at least make sure there's four of us here.
Like a year, if it's Monday, that would be.
That's fine, yeah.
Word, I, yeah.
Okay. And you guys are good, you said you're good with that?
So we're talking Monday, August twelfth?
Yes.
Still six P M?
Meal at six.
Meal at six, official meeting still at seven. So Monday August twelfth. Yeah.
I'm good, you guys are good with that?
Let's, let's do it. Okay, meeting adjourned.